Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Aleria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the September 19th meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog from the Dog Kennel today.
Come here. Slow down, slow down, slow down. There you go. Say hello.
Aw, he picks you. Aw, look at that, aw. Your new dog. Come get him Saturday, he's all yours.
We'll give it to him now. Special station.
Okay, okay.
There you go, calm down. I've been a dog for volunteer for 15 years. Oh, have you?
He can tell, or he can tell.
Come here. Settle back, settle back. Hey, Pop. Sit. You're excitable.
There you go.
That's a good dog.
We're the street, my tree. Up there. Our featured dog this week is a two- to three-year-old male yellow lab. He was found on 20th Street in Lorraine, and he really likes this gentleman up front. He's already been neutered. He's available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock. And I can tell you, yellow labs are great dogs, because I've got one at home. But stop by, like I said, we have 29 other dogs available. Jack, just give him a license, I'll pick it up.
Do you want to take him home? Seriously, I think he picks you. Oh my gosh.
Oh my goodness. You sure it's not his dog?
I know, I was thinking the same thing. Are you sure that's not your dog?
Yeah. On 20th Street, Lorraine. Okay, come on.
Aw.
Come on.
That kind of happened to me at the Doggie Do Festival, there was a dog that took to me, but it was a Mastiff, and I'm like, oh my gosh, I cannot take a Mastiff home right now. It's a little bit too big, you know, I like the little dogs. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1...
Yeah, we did.
Job and Family Services?
Pink one? Yeah, we did.
We did?
It was like 300 and some thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
Job and Family Services.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to request a brief executive session with the Board to discuss potential new hires at Golden Acres Nursing Home. Further discussion on the continued positioning for upcoming labor negotiations. I've received requests to negotiate that have been filed with Serb for several of our expiring bargaining unit contracts. Just want to update you on those informations, on that information, and possibly sale of real estate. Those topics are allowable for executive session discussions under the Sunshine Law, so it acts as a conclusion of our regular Board meeting today. We go into the executive session and have those talks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Approving away the reading in the State of the County Commissioners' meeting since September 12th.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cortez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I would like to request a brief executive session with the Board to discuss potential new hires at Golden Acres Nursing Home. Further discussion on the continued positioning for upcoming labor negotiations. I've received requests to negotiate that have been filed with Serb for several of our expiring bargaining unit contracts. Just want to update you on those informations, on that information, and possibly sale of real estate. Those topics are allowable for executive session discussions under the Sunshine Law, so it acts as a conclusion of our regular Board meeting today. We go into the executive session and have those talks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Approving away the reading in the State of the County Commissioners' meeting since September 12th.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Prosecutor authorized payment of 25% cash reaction amount of $23,619 for victim witness program administered through Prosecutor's Office effective October 1st, 2012 through September 30th, 2013. Attorney General awarded $70,856 for four part-time victim advocates.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, do we want to hold this? I thought Dennis wanted to come over and talk about this.
Or George.
You're gonna?
Jury.
If you want to hold, I will. Come over.
I was told that he wanted to come over and talk about it.
Just if the Commissioners have some questions.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if he wanted to present anything, Jerry, did you want to put into this, Jerry? Did you know?
Only that the match is a few thousand dollars less than it was last year.
This is something that we do every year.
Yeah.
So it's not a new expenditure.
Right.
Do you have any questions? Do you want him to come over and present?
No, I just had Dennis was going to come here.
Oh, okay.
So I just wanted to get, if he was running late, I just wanted to put it off until he would come, so.
All right.
So we can go ahead forward with it, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
That was pretty quick. Would you pass those down? Commissioners, I need to bring an issue with the airport from the floor with regard to our insurance premium. We've been working on this for the insurance that's outside of Corser with the airport, trying to tease down the lowest and best rate we could, but that pushed us pretty close to the timeframes for renewal. This is a fairly aggressive price, it's the best we can get, and you can see that our risk manager, once again, I've been working very hard on this, but I don't want to push the envelope any further. We're getting on premium pay, given how long it takes us to get a check out to folks these days. I want to make sure that, unlike last year, that they're not calling and asking for a credit card number to secure the insurance, which happened last year. So I'm sorry it wasn't on the agenda, but if you could take a look at this and possibly pass a resolution authorizing renewal of this insurance, I would appreciate it.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, question, Jim, what was our cost last year on this?
I don't have that in front of, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I don't have it.
We'll get it after the fact.
Yeah, Joette was working on this and right up until the end. I know that the initial offers weren't suitable. There's not a lot of people that work in this end of the insurance. We switched agents, not agents, but we switched companies, I think about two or three years ago, because we got more aggressive pricing. So it's a bit specialized in this area, and I'm pretty satisfied that she's wrestled the issue to the best advantage of the county.
Thank you.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Did you say aye or nay?
I said aye.
Okay, sorry. Kalo?
Aye.
Actually, that's all I have for this morning, thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant Kindergarten?
I have no report this morning, Commissioners.
Wow, this is going to be the fastest meeting in history, maybe.
Commissioner's report.
Well, two things. October 1st is going to be our kickoff date for our spay and neuter program at the dog kennel. Dogs will be spayed or neutered before they are taken home by their prospective new owners, so that's good news. We've been working on that for a long time, and it just finally came together. Everybody's on board, and it's passed through our legal department to make sure that our applications and things are all in order, so. And then this weekend, I told you all that I was going to be at the Doggie Do Festival in Oberlin, and we had five different categories. It was Doggy Idol, which was best singing dog, Dancer Tail Off, best dancing dog, Best Bunch, which was more than two or more dogs in costume, Best Trick, and Coolest Costume for One Dog. So it was a lot of fun. Kay Norenberg, which is Eric Norenberg's wife, was there, she was one of the judges with me, she's also a real estate agent, and Hannah Richard, she's a cheerleader and softball player and just an Oberlin resident, and she was really cute and a lot of fun, too. So we had a great time out there, and I can't wait to do it again next year. And I had my first Enrec meeting, basically just going over how we're going to rate all the applications that come in for our natural resource acquisition committee, and all kinds of things happening this week, but I just can't think off the top of my head what else I did, so.
Commissioner, question, how much was Enrec? What did we get awarded in the end?
I think 1.5 million.
1.5 million.
Mm-hmm. So I'm looking forward to working with the different communities on awarding those grants, and it looks like it's going to be an interesting process, a lot of time going to be spent on that, so.
Do you have the issue with the new adoption policy at the?
I have it here.
Are you going to go over it?
I just said that we were going to kick off on October 1st.
Oh, you didn't want to explain anything about what it hopes to achieve, I mean?
Just so that we get more, all of our dogs spayed or neutered prior to going?
Supposed to be 100% now.
Right, 100%, which we thought we were there, we were close to 100%, but there were some that were following through the cracks because we were giving out certificates. Is that how that was working?
Well, we were giving out vouchers and not all?
And not everybody used them.
Our number was a little higher than what the data suggested, because our folks weren't backing out the dogs that were already spayed and neutered before they did the calculations on the numbers, but there was still a significant population that was unattended to. Hopefully this partnership will fill that hole more fully, at least for the next year or two, and we'll see how that works out. And I think the new terms and conditions there clearly spell out the responsibilities, but owners are going to have to wait for their dog a little bit.
Oh yeah, a couple days, but I think it's well worth it, the dog be pretty much vetted, correct? I mean, everything, but?
Right, and while the dog is being spayed and neutered, any additional checks and care that the future owner may want, they can authorize with the veterinarian if they so desire, so.
Right.
They'll be bringing home hopefully a fairly healthy pet.
Correct. Yeah, we're excited about that. Okay, that's the end of my report.
Yeah, Commissioner, it was a busy week. Just attend a lot of events, again, kudos out to Lorraine County Urban League and their Teen Institute. I was at the Lorraine Arts Council earlier in the week, but they did their presentation with the mural they're going to put downtown. The teens did a very nice job with explaining how they'd like to see the city of Lorraine look eventually. Just nice energetic group, they all got to speak at the Black River Landing. Most of the week was tied up with the township issues, most of you have read in the newspaper, all the Commissioners participating to a degree on trying to get that resolved. Lorraine City Council did pass a new ordinance freezing it at 130% of in-city rate, which is what it was before, but adding an operation maintenance charge of $10.94, so, and that's supposed to start January 1st, so the new bills will reflect the 130%, they won't have the 200% on it.
I, just to tag off of that, I did talk to Chase Rittenhour yesterday, Mayor, and asked about the summer water discount rate for the sewers, and that is still in committee, and he's not guaranteeing whether or not that will go forward for the township residents. And I do want to thank the city of Lorraine also, I know there's still, I've gotten some emails from township residents that are still not happy with the outcome, and I can understand, but, you know, we're a lot better off now than we were, you know, last week, so hopefully it'll be, you know, a happy resolution.
Continue to work on the issue.
Yeah, they have a few months to work on it if they so desire.
Also, our Lorraine County Land Bank meeting was canceled this week, myself and the mayor had to attend a funeral. A very good man passed away at a very young age, Andy Jorgis, the owner of the original Garden Basket on North Ridge Road. His wife Elaine serves as our Director of the Addus Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services. It was a very large turnout for a very good man, so regrets out to that family.
Jim McCann, too.
Yeah, Jim McCann passed away also.
Good people.
One of those weeks. So that'll be the end of my report.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Tom on your last, did you ask me something?
No.
Okay. I just brought up to him on the Board of Correspondents, number one, the Aleria Township trustees are looking for a demo of the residential structure. This might be one that could qualify for the land bank, so they want to reach out to the? Yes, I can't ever, I'm pretty, I'm looking to get a knock over something pretty quick, even an outhouse at this point, or an old shed. So I got on these already, believe it or not, and I spoke with the Aleria Township, and I pulled up the properties. Neither one of them is going, is in a position right now to be qualified to have any action done on them. I did take a look at them, they both, one teeters, one definitely needs to, I think if you push it hard, it'll go over, but the people are not in arrears on their property taxes, and the township hasn't taken them through the condemnation process, and we do have a letter from their fire chief, and I think in a spirit of wanting to get things done, you know, it does say that they're a fire hazard and they need to be torn down, but that in itself does not qualify as a condemnation process. What I've discussed with our team upstairs, and I'll be working on in the next 30 days, is to work with the Prosecutor's Office and some outside folks to have a session on how to do the condemnation process from a township perspective. Cities usually have a lot more staffing to assist them with that, you know, these township folks, they work pretty much on a shoestring, they have only, you know, less than a handful of employees, and they have a great responsibility, so I'm going to try to assist them with that, and I know Jerry's been involved with that, and I think that some kind of supposium will work better, and then I'm going to come up with some handouts that'll work them through the continuum from, this is where you begin, and these are the steps that you take all along the way, and kind of check them off so that they can get some of these properties to be demolished. There is a need in the township, I remember when we first started talking about this, there was some reluctance that those needs weren't going to exist, but they do exist. We just got to get the right properties. But these two are not far along enough, so we need to, I need to go back and work with the township, and I'll work hand in hand with them to bring them through the right process, and then hopefully in a few months, we'll be able to do some work on them.
Seems to be the case all throughout the county, just not far along enough for using funds that kind of prevent us from using the county.
I think the needs there, but the preliminary?
Preliminary.
Thank you.
Welcome.
A little tongue-tied this morning, I didn't have enough coffee. Has not been satisfactorily completed yet to be able to take these properties to where we can demo. The closest one I think is going to be in Sheffield Village, but they just gave them a 60-day extension to demolish the property themselves, which pushes it out to the middle of November. We're starting to look at stuff that's on the delinquent tax rolls, but not everything on the delinquent tax rolls is going to be something we want. So we'll try to identify some properties that way, but I've met now with several of the communities, and we've discussed things, and I think that they're very serious about wanting to work the program, but to date I have not received a home that's ready for us to go out and to demolish. We have the supposium set up next week for contractors, vendors, engineers, and we've already had quite a few RSVPs that are going to come to us to show them what we're doing and how they can involve themselves. My biggest desire is to have Lorraine County contractors be able to achieve the bulk of this work and keep the dollars here in this community, so I'm looking forward to that, and we've been going out and meeting with the individual communities and explaining the process to them, but it's been a little slower than I had thought. I really thought, was expecting that maybe next month we'd be pushing over a few structures and demonstrating some work, and I'm not sure that we're going to be able to accomplish that at this point. Although we're setting the borrowing in place, we've done everything with the AG, now we're just waiting for some projects to come through so we can either bid them or do an RFP. We are doing the RFQs to qualify, pre-qualify engineers and so forth, so we'll be ready, we'll be ready to go. We just need to get the properties in a state that we can go in and do this. Now recognizing that these properties will be still titled to the owners, and we'll be putting a lien against the property for all the cost of the demolition, and either the lien will be paid back, and once that money's paid back, that money becomes a resource of the land bank.
Right.
It's no longer tagged to the AG's office. If they don't pay the lien and it goes into delinquency, then we have to capture the project on the far end when it comes through auction, and prior to getting to that, we'll take it off the delinquency rolls, and then it'll become an asset of the land bank that way. I would prefer to see that we got paid for that work somewhere down the line, but I think it's a little unrealistic, most times we're probably just going to recapture the process, the property when it goes delinquent. So we're going to be ready to go, and we could be ready right now, because the Port Authority was prepared to upfront some of the money until the borrowing was in place to actually get out there and demo, but it hasn't materialized.
Additional, a lot of meetings this week with residents and different organizations, just talking about the county and the sewers rate, as far as the $10.94, I'm glad it repealed it to 130%, but at that fee, that service fee, that calculates at a 700 cubic feet for your water, basically a 32% increase still. So basically, they went one direction, they reduced it, but with the service fees adding another 32% for residents, just certain residents, so hopefully we will be able to get them to see that that's not the best way of doing it. If the issue with the tunnel, I keep hearing a lot from City Council and the mayor that they're looking at a $65 million tunnel that they need in order to resolve the issues, and the mayor made a statement that there's infiltration into the sewer system that's causing Lorraine to receive four to six times the amount of sewage. By the numbers, I do have a lot of questions on that, because when you look at the population, population of these areas only come up to about 5%. So when you take 5% of that population for stormwater sewage, and it's causing four to six times, the numbers just don't really add up that well. So I would have to question that. We still have asked for information as far as the flow, where they're coming up, that the water from the townships are actually causing the problems. Received an email that the city has canceled my meeting with Mr. Fowler later this month, so we will try to reschedule on that, but we haven't received the information. And my main concern is if they're worried about infiltration on this, it's really not addressing the issue. If you're going to take that fee and put it towards a $65 million tunnel, you're not doing anything with the actual sewers, and the townships that you're saying are leaking are allowing water to infiltrate it, so you're still going to get that sewage. Plus, there's a retention base system out in Amherst Township that can hold up to 800 gallons, which is about a day's worth, maybe a day plus. So just need to get the information from the mayor, from the city of Lorraine, on what they're looking for, what their actual goal is, and what they're going to use this dollars for. Because if it's truly for relieving the problem that the city of Lorraine's facing, if they took the 1094 and they divided it among all the homes throughout the city and the townships, it's far less than a 50-cent increase per month for all residents. I think that would be more acceptable to everyone if you would charge 50 cents or less to resolve that problem, just than targeting individuals because they claim they don't have a contract. So I'm hopeful that City Council and the mayor will review this and will take my calls so we can sit down and talk about it, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to reschedule this meeting so we can have the county engineer involved, maybe bring someone from Lorco in, and the trustees as well from Aleria, Sheffield, and Amherst Township. And last thing, there is, again, that type of season, flu shots are coming available. It's in the correspondence, but September 26th, 11 to 6, Columbia Township Fire Station, La Grange, United Methodist Church, and Lorraine County Fairgrounds, and the New Russia Township Hall. Cost is $15 a shot for residents and $20 a shot for non-residents, so. At the fairgrounds, they actually have a drive-through. I actually volunteered out there a couple of times, they called me.
You're giving the shots?
No, no, no. Volunteers are direct traffic. They actually have a drive-through, if you can't get out of the car, you pull into the facility, you stick your arm out, you pay your 15 bucks, sign your piece of paper, they give you your shot, and off you go. It's faster than McDonald's or Taco Bell. I just want to let people know that that's coming up, so that's the end of my report.
Board Correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Public comment. Ernie, do you want the flash drive now?
No, we're not going to do a flash drive this morning.
No?
We're fine, thank you.
Sorry, Ernie.
Thank you. I'm so sorry you were here, thank you. Good morning, Commissioners and Administrators, thank you very much for the opportunity to come today and to speak to you. I'm here on behalf of the Lorraine County Joint Vocational School Board of Education to introduce to you our new Superintendent, Dr. Glenn Faircloth. He comes to us from the Dayton City Schools, and we have a shared enthusiasm, commitment to student success, and vision to make Lorraine County Joint Vocational School the premier career and tech school in the state of Ohio. And I'd like to present to you Dr. Glenn Faircloth.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to thank you all for having this opportunity this morning. Just wanted to share a little bit about myself, as my Board President indicated, I hail from Dayton, Ohio, where I served 13 years as, in the education system at Dayton Public Schools, ranging from schoolteacher, coach, director, principal, et cetera. It was certainly a wonderful opportunity there, but I'm embracing this opportunity here in Lorraine County as we make our Lorraine County JVS our career center, one of the premier career centers in the state of Ohio, have several things lined up so to make sure that we do that, but I do have one pressing issue that I must get accomplished. We have a renewal ballot coming up in November, Issue 41, it's a renewal, no tax increase. As you all know, some of the folks that's viewing this are in a room, that the JVS has been a catalyst for Lorraine County. Certainly, we have allowed several thousands of students to graduate and enter into the workforce and bring back that wealth in Lorraine County where they're purchasing homes, buying automobiles, putting back into the economy, and now we need help with this. We have to get this renewal passed in order to maintain our business. We will have to make cuts if this issue do not pass. Currently now, I'm looking through my organization structure, and we'll reorganize some things as we tighten up our belts now, prior to, because this is just an issue that will maintain us. It will not reduce the deficit that we already have, but we certainly need Issue 41 to pass. And as indicated before, it's simply a renewal. There will be no tax increase with that. So I hope that the Lorraine County community embraces us as we are truly one of the gems in this county, and we want to continue that services and allow for bigger and better things as we continue to build on the success that we already have. We have a tremendous staff that's willing to toe the line and really work diligently on this. But I hope that you please hear our cry and hear our help that issue 41, a tax renewal only, will certainly allow us to maintain what we have going on. I thank the commissioners for giving me this time to just kind of talk about the Lorraine County JVS. I thank you.
Thank you.
Let's stick around, Glenn. You're up at the microphone. You have 15 minutes of fame. You're new to the community.
Oh, okay. I wanted the heat to the three minutes. I don't want that buzzer to go off. And someone's looking like, get out of there, get out of there.
No, you're fine. I've told you before in the past that it is my alma mater. I did go to JVS and graduated from there. And I thought it was a great school then. I think it's a great school now. And I would be more than happy to support you as a board if my commissioners would be so willing to do a resolution of support for the passage of your renewal.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I heard all the wonderful stories about some of our alum that are working, some of them are entrepreneurs. I visited, my first week here, I was able to visit some of our students that are working on their family farms. And I mean, those young people are doing some great things. And I often share with them about just hard work and commitment to the cause. I'm also a veteran where I served four years in the U.S. Army, two tours in Saudi Arabia, one tour in Panama. I was a ranger there. And the commitment that we have in the military and the services is the same type of commitment that I see some of these young people have forming alliances and team building. Those things are critical as I listen to employers talk about these soft skills. You know, they want a team player, they want someone who comes to work on time, who dressed apart, who's able to be able to be taught, not just come in and think that they know it all. And I'm listening to them, and I tell you, we have some great young people that can do those things.
Yes, you do. Jim, I know in the past, in regards to the Joint Vocational School, we've done a letter from the board of commissioners, all three of us.
We always have. We support our partners there. They're one of the pillars of the Lorraine County Growth Partnership, have always been there when we need them. I want to just kind of say one thing. When you said make JVS the premier, I already think it is. And I'd be happy to prepare that letter for the board's signature, once again, supporting that and send it off to the local media indicating our support for you, Levi.
I appreciate it. And also, we have, this Saturday is our appreciation day at the Lorraine County JVS. It will be on our grounds this Saturday from 10 to 3:00. So please, come out and enjoy the festivities. This is our way of giving back to the Lorraine County community.
It's definitely nice to meet you. Welcome to Lorraine County.
Thank you.
JVS is definitely a great school. I had a lot of friends that went through the program. A lot of them are in the military now, serving. We have individuals that are working, going there to improve their school skills in order to get promoted at work. So JVS offers a lot to this community, and I wish you a lot of success with this levy. And please, continue on and make this one of the premier schools, like you said.
Yes. And I also think we're premier here, but we are working to be premier in the nation.
Yeah.
I think globally.
Your welding program's excellent, along with the culinary arts program. So I believe that ranks in the nation, correct?
Yes, our culinary department, we've got Christian and Tim, those guys out there are doing an excellent job with the young people.
Now, do you have, if residents wanted to walk through and see a tour of the different programs, I was able to walk through last year and see the students, the interaction in the classroom. Do you have any type?
Yeah, certainly, folks can contact the JVS and speak with our principal there, Ms. Patilian, and set up a tour so they can get a chance to see. We want to open up our doors. Some folk have been into the career center, but we still have several who have not. They roll past and say, wait, what is that? You know, is that another factory or anything like that? But we want them to know that that is an educational institution where we are producing young people. These folks are going into apprenticeships, they're going to college, they're going into the workforce. Because it's no longer your mom and pop joint vocational school. We are a career center where we are preparing these young people to be technically savvy as well as able to go into the workforce and go into communities and take charge because they are well-trained. And with additional training afterwards, these are the people that you will see CEOs and owners of companies. So we're much, much different than your mom and pop vocational school. We are a career technical center.
Buckeye Room, what are the hours on that? People want to come in and just see that?
The hours varies. The culinary instructors certainly can help out with that as we use that facility sometimes to have different small piquets of sort. So someone can contact our culinary department there certainly to find out those hours.
Well, if you'd like to, Tom, you can actually see them in action. September 30th at the Second Harvest Food Bank. They'll be there at the Second Generations fundraiser for our Second Harvest Food Bank. And they do a very good job.
Absolutely.
Christian are wonderful.
And the instructors and some of the young folks will be out at our appreciation day this Saturday. So you're welcome to come and meet and fellowship with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
We'd like to make a resolution in support of issue 41, Commissioner.
I kind of did already, didn't I? He was just going to do a letter, right?
No, we can do a resolution also.
Excuse me, I just wanted to say that at the JVS, you probably know that we serve over 2,000 high school students and we serve over 3,000 in our adult career center there. So we really, and we have tailored programs where we actually go out with mobile units on site and provide additional training, and it's tailored specifically to such businesses as Ridge Tool and others that need training. We really work hard to address the problem of unemployment and underemployment in the county. And talking about Saturday, please come out and see, we do have, as Dr. Faircloth said, so many of our areas and our labs will be open. There will be demonstrations. Certainly, culinary is going to be doing a lot of cooking and a lot of demonstrating in that area. But come and see our law enforcement, the big rigs, the precision machine technology, as you said, our welding, our project Lead the Way where we're working with addressing STEM, the science, technology, engineering, and math, with a focus on engineering and come out and see what we have going if you can. Thank you.
And just on the adult thing, just want to bring up something. A friend, a neighbor of mine, he actually went through the JVS program. While he was there, he was in class with another student. When they graduated the program, they actually started a business together. And so they're actually working in different counties, going through and doing treatment for trailer park jobs and that, so.
That's wonderful. We have a 99% graduation rate. We're very proud of that, as well as 65% of our students that graduated in the class of 2012 were employed at graduation. They had done internships and externships, and they had secured employment in their field by graduation.
And they're making a good wage when they graduate.
They're making a living wage. And for many of them, I think sometimes we look and we know that young people try different fields, they're making decisions. And part of that process, for many of our students, they use their stackable certification, their articulated college credits to go on. But for many, and I think of some specific cases where we had students in cosmetology that used that skill to put themselves through college, to be able to work their own hours, to be able to apply their trade, to go through college, into marketing, and to start a business. And many of them use those skills to go on in continuing, in training, and to fulfill their dreams.
What you pull off out of JVS is what we need. There's been too much of a push on the college education. And in this market nowadays, we need the people that are coming out of your programs and actually going to work. And there are great wages and benefits involved in the programs that they graduate from.
Absolutely. And that's a discussion that we had in the past week in Columbus and discussing why that we do not have college and/or career readiness. And we're talking about that they want to have one year of college. There needs to be that understanding about the stackable, the certification, and the fact that all of our, 100% of our full-time programs lead to certification, 100%. If they're going full-time, they're going to get certification in their areas. So that's, I agree with you. We need to look at that. What is the value of having the year of college? Absolutely, to have that experience, to the things, the maturation process, the things that you learn through college. But we need to have that understanding about the articulated credits, about dual enrollment. And we work with our partnership with the college. That's something that we're working on with the kiosk, and that when you enroll with the dual enrollment, we need to leverage our resources in this community together and not have duplication of expensive labs, of welding, of other things. And we're working with the college. Our adult ed is under the Board of Regents. We are working with the college so that you can have that dual enrollment, and you may be taking your classroom in either facility, and your lab in the facility that is best suited for the area of your programming. So absolutely, we're part of the solution.
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we can send a letter, but if we'd like, I'd also like to make a motion to have a resolution in support of their levy renewal.
I'll second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Morning, commissioners. Just wanted to bring your attention one more time that on the 26th, at the Transportation Center, we'll be having the Land Bank Contractor Forum. And we want to try and build the roster of contractors who can participate in the program and make the information available across the board. So that's going to be 4 to 5:30.
Okay, thank you.
Are any of the commissioners available to attend?
Yes. I think we've all.
Yeah, I think we've all.
Come on, Don, second in so Sam can get up here, okay?
Good morning, commissioners, everyone. It's been a while. How's everybody doing?
Good. How you doing, Sam?
Two points I'd like to make while I'm up here. Number one, transparency. And number two, communication. As all of you have probably been aware of, you know, we've expressed our displeasure with the Veteran Service Commission, we as a concerned citizen and veterans of Lorraine County. Because for years, the way business has been done with the Veteran Service Commission, the dialogue with the veterans' community has been vague at best. So because of our insistence and our consistency attending these meetings and asking questions, now we have no longer accepted the idea or the answer that is under advisement. And so because of this, we've made positive inroads with the Veteran Service Commission. And sometime, we have to sort of motivate them by asking questions as to their dialogue with you, the county commissioners, because things are past, resolutions and things of this nature, vans purchased, and you know, we have issues with drivers taking the vans home and about the insurance and things of this nature. So by us getting vague answers, all we're trying to do is find out what actually is going on and how is it best serving not only the veterans' community, but the community of Lorraine County as a whole. And by us expressing our displeasure with them and the way things have been done, well, now I think we've made some valuable inroads because now we get concise and clear minutes of each meeting, whereas before, we weren't getting any minutes at all, and there was no definition as to all the veterans' input when they were standing, asked questions. So now, we have made some positive progress. But however, I guess we are here to appeal to you as a county commissioner, open the lines of dialogue with the Veteran Service Commission even more so we get a clear understanding of the relationship between the two of you. Excuse us, I'm kind of sleepy this morning.
That's all right.
But thank you. That's all I have.
Good morning.
Good morning, Don.
Can we have an extra one for our clerk? Do you have four?
I'll already have mine afterwards if you're on time. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Don Addy, Junior Vice Commander of DAV, Chapter 20 in Lorraine, resident of Lorraine, 458 Florida Avenue. Just to cap a little bit on what Sam said there, my first question would be is, did we have an MOU, a memorandum of understanding between county and the VA as far as the purchase of the vans? In other words?
Memorandum of understanding.
Right.
No, they just purchased them. They're vans.
Okay, have the vans been turned over to the VA? They've been licensed through the county already, okay?
Correct. We've received them, I believe they're ready. Have they gone for delivery yet?
Yes, they're on the road already.
Oh, okay, thank you. I got the email last week.
Couple of clarifications. That type of capital is always titled to the county. I would be the county commissioner as the legislative authority. So the vans are in the Board of Commissioners, named technically, as are just about every other vehicle somewhere in the county.
I think the question there, though, Jim, was if they were ours or if they were part of that VA deal where they go.
The DAV.
That's was the.
I wasn't done. The, last week, I stickered them, and because it was an urgency, I had temporary tags put on them. Usually, we wait till the permanent plates come in, and I had them transferred out to the Veterans Commission. With respect to the VA program, it's my understanding, and it's not official, but I had a brief talk with Mr. Childress, that they were reviewing whether they were going to enter into that agreement with the Veterans Administration. Now, that's outside the purview of this board to decide, but at that point, the vans would need to be transferred from Lorraine County, that are under the control of the Veterans Commission, to the VA. I believe they require title before they will provide that programmatic support. And as of today, I don't know that they made a final decision within the commission. And we usually don't have an MOU on vehicles that we detail out to agencies. It's never been done in all the years I've been here.
Okay. Well, I was under the understanding that now, we may be in jeopardy with, by the county licensing the vehicles and not turning them over to the VA. By turning them over to the VA, the VA accepts all responsibilities, the licensing, the EZ Pass, the maintenance, the gas, and everything.
Yeah, that would be.
Now, will they be?
I'm sorry.
Now, will they accept that? That they've already been licensed to the county and they're on the road?
Oh, we could certainly turn them over at any time. That would be up to the Veterans Commission to let us know they wanted to participate in that program. We're not the partner, I'm looking for a word, the partner with the VA in that program, that would be the Veterans Commission. At such time the Veterans Commission desires entering into that relationship, we'll certainly facilitate working with them to make that process happen.
Okay, and my second question is, is drivers of the vehicles and that, and taking their vehicles home? They have been home, trust me. They've been taking them home, and when we asked the question, was it was okayed by the county commissioners that they take the vans home?
That's not completely accurate. The, under our cost or insurance policy, we insure probably about 90% of the vehicles in Lorraine County that are in government use, county use. There are a few agencies that have a little bit different arrangement. We achieve return on that through indirect cost analysis that we do every year, and we bill each department. Similar arrangement exists with the Veterans Commission, but since their funds are drawn from the resources of the overall general fund, they're part of that so we don't bill them indirect. It'd be kind of silly to give them here and then bill them here and move your own money around, so to speak. But they still fall under the controls of our cost of policy, which would require a written approval from this board to allow the vehicles to go home. And currently, we only have a very small handful of vehicles that we allow to be taken home by any county employee when there's a legitimate business need to do so, such as the EMA Director, who is on 24/7 call and goes out for every imaginable type situation. He takes a vehicle home. There's very rare incidents when they do, and there's a few at the county engineer's office because they respond. And of course, the sheriff's departments handles are completely different because of that specific need.
Exactly, and I understand all that. And there are vehicles that need to possibly be home, like you said, for emergency cases or whatever, on call and that. But in this particular case here, there's no reason for them guys to take those vans home.
The direction I received from this board was to provide parking for them in the garage.
Correct. Well, they're being taken home, they're sitting at home and leaving from work. Nobody else takes their vehicle home. Do youths take a vehicle home?
Absolutely not.
Okay. All right, and my second, or I should say, my third question is here, is I'd like to ask the county commissioners for, and this would be through the Lorraine County Veterans Commissions Board, a $500 sponsorship for advertising outreach for veterans and their families for the upcoming event there that I just had given you there at Palast Theater this weekend. And I think it would be a good plug, a good way to get advertising out there. We've brought this up numerous times.
At Veterans Services, and they don't want to participate?
Pardon?
The Veterans Service Commission does not want to participate in advertising for this, is that what you said?
Well, they seem to think that everything that we ask anyway has to go through youths.
They have their own budget with their own advertising dollars, and everything is in their budget for that. So if they wanted to, they have advertising dollars.
Well, until we brought up a few points here at numerous meetings, that I tried to push, that they had $277.50 was their advertising for outreach, and that was in the rural counties. Now, I know we're not as big as Cuyahoga County or nothing to be on TV all the time, but I told them, I can't see why we can't dump 3,000 or 4,000 in there and maybe quarterly or whatever, take a half a page out in the newspapers, both of them, in that for better outreach to get out. in that, for better outreach to get out there to our veterans and their families, what's available to them. Half these people, at 27,000 veterans here in Lorraine County, got no idea what the hell is going on and what's available to them.
Well, Don, not to stop you, but the Board of Commissioners only has the ability to review their budget. We can't revise it or tell them where to move money to. So that I think would be the Veterans Services Commission to do that based, we can't line item.
With regard to expenditures, there may be a misunderstanding. They may be explaining it differently. Only on certain expenditures for various agencies in the county does it have to come for the Board as a contracting authority. With respect to those types of expenses, that would be their Board decision. But if we were purchasing a vehicle or something that was large, we would assist them in that and work on that. And certain expenses like that do come through the Board for approval, but not all the smaller stuff. And what goes into their line item budget would be the budget they prepare and submit or they can, as they have done in the past, they can transfer money into those line items. All out-of-county travel, and this is where some of the trouble came in earlier a few years ago, all out-of-county travel by code has to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners and those type of things by code must come to the Board, but not everything.
Certainly not advertising.
No.
And since then, if I may, I don't mean to interrupt, but since then, after numerous meetings and asking that, they did make a remark that they had transferred some funds from one situation to another for advertising and that.
5,000.
5,000, yes. And it seems as though every time that we try to ask for something, that it's like pulling teeth, it's like asking for money out of their pocket. And they don't seem to get the message that they work for us. And in turn, as long as we come up with a viable program and a legal situation in that, that it can go on the line budget, it could go to youths for review or to the auditor and so on and so forth. I assume that's the way the procedure works, as long as it's a legal and viable program and that. But it just seems like it's pulling teeth every time we ask for something. My last question is, can we still get into our budget? Can we still get into the money if we need money for a program? In other words, there's a certain amount of money allocated for veteran services and programs and so on? The budget has been submitted, okay? I was told a couple of times that the deadline was October. We had anything that we wanted to put in, we could always go back into the budget?
Are you talking about increasing the budget, Don? Or are you saying going back into the budget?
Increasing the budget.
Approved on? Because we approved their budget already.
Right, so that's the end of it. In other words, you cannot go back into anything or can't address anything else, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Where the transfers come in, because every, every year...
I think he was talking about, excuse me, I think he was talking about increasing the budget they asked for.
Right, but the problem, the thing is, every year that they've asked for, they never even, they never spent the money that they've asked for. They always have money left over. So there probably is money for a program, maybe. I don't know, Lisa, do you know how their budget is? Maybe we can, you can get with her afterwards to see how close they're, look like they're going to come to spending all their money, because normally they don't. There's usually extra money in their budget. They don't spend it all. So you probably aren't going to need additional funds from another general fund area to put, to give to them, so.
Right, but I think what he was asking is if a program came up and he needed additional dollars, we'd be willing to give it to him. And, you know, you're right, you're referring to the inside mileage that's set aside for the veterans, as long as you're using it per Ohio Revised Code. I believe if you, if they came back with a program, they said, "We need X amount of dollars for it." They would submit that to us, we would review it and then vote on it at that time.
When is the physical year run?
Oh, calendar year, Don.
Calendar year?
We're calendar year. But under the code, what happens is in May, we get their budget request and we already had the hearing on it. Just to take it so there was no arguing or anything else, they're going through a whole lot of flux and you guys are more involved now, you hadn't been in the past, asking questions. But we did approve their budget, but any change to that? Jim, from the budgetary side, they came back with a program under revised code?
There's some nuances with the veterans' budget. I was looking, I wasn't, not paying attention. I'm trying to think, because the October, what you said about October resonated with me. There's something, there's something there and I don't remember what it is.
Well, it, yeah, and that's what keeps coming back to me. When we were back here in three or four meetings ago, whenever, when the van issue come up and finally the vans were approved, the purchase of two vans and that, we had, we had asked numerous times to submit a couple of situations into that budget. And what I got was, is we're working on the budget. Don, I know my job. The next time was, was we're still tweaking it. And then we got till such and such a date to get that budget into youths for review, okay? When I asked again, it was already gone. So we never got to see it, review it or be a part of it.
Don, I'll look at the code this afternoon and I'll give you a call. The, I just can't, there's something there, as you said, and because it's a bit different and then how the rest of it's handled, I just don't have immediate recall on that.
Well, it states it in the Revised Code, the 50, I think it's the 5701 or the 5901, one of the codes there, it states is October being a deadline is...
For the final yearly budget, the final calendar budget for them?
To go back into the budget.
Ted, I don't know, there's something, like I said, I don't have good recall on it, but there is, there is something in that timeframe. I don't know if it's final submission or something they have to do. I know we went through the process earlier in the year that were required by code, but I don't know what that other date is. I don't have...
I mean, but there should be a workaround. If there was a program that was needed, that would be beneficial in order to get them the capital if the Board approved.
Mr. Cortez, that was the 5901. We have to request a review, a hearing of that.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
To us or to the Veterans Services Commission? Because they submit the budget. Who's the hearing to?
To you guys.
To the Commissioners.
From veterans groups or from Veterans Services?
Services Commissioners.
Don, could you lift up the microphone so we can hear him? Introduce yourself, sir.
Jesse Hill, Lirio, Ohio. No, the 5901 states, and just not privating him, but it's that the Veteran Service Commission would have to request a hearing to you guys by October.
To have an amendment to their budget, but the Veterans Services Commission would have to do it?
Right, for the budget, right. But I believe you guys already settled the budget for next year, all right? Am I correct?
We did, we approved their budget based on our request because we have no ability to revise it at all. We can just review and say yes.
Right, and then what Don was, I learned too, was we, during the meeting, we had requested certain things that we wanted to look at and everything so that we could submit to the budget. And they told us they had to be in by October. That was the first of the month.
You'd have to give those suggestions to the Veterans Services Commission because they're the official body to request from us.
Right, but they was giving us a runaround on it and so, and then we found out, well, okay, October already, I mean, they already submitted the budget and they was telling us that we hate to have it in by October. But they were giving us the impression next year.
Okay, I don't know.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know, that was at the meeting, the first Tuesday of this month, or the first Wednesday of this month, because we didn't have it on Tuesday because of the holiday.
Thanks, Jesse.
Thank you, Jesse. Once again, the reason, also, I have to say this again, not to exercise redundancy, but we were told by Bob Childers that the reason they took the vans home was because of insurance purposes. He told us this yesterday. That's why we were so adamant in asking you for precise definition of who is eligible to take these vans home, Ted. And when Bob told us that, he said, "Well, the reason they're taking the vans home because it's more convenient and the vans were what, broken into or something, Jesse, over at the garage or something like this." So we asked him, "Is that legal? Can your drivers take the vans home?" And he said, "Yeah, because the county commissioner is okay there."
Hey, when in doubt, blame the county commissioners.
Well, you know, because the question I asked Mr. Churman, I said, "You know, I used to see the vans parked down here." I said, "What happened?" And he was saying that they were, well, we had asked about taking them home. And Mr. Churman was saying, because of insurance and vandalism, he said that three vans, well, I don't know, three, three windows had bricks thrown through them here at the county building.
Are you aware of that, Mr. Cortez?
And so...
That's not, you know...
That's not accurate.
That's not accurate.
Well, that's what he told us yesterday. And then my statement was, because I said, "Why are they taking the vans home?" I said, "I can understand the fire department, police department, you know, I can understand it because those are emergency response team." But these guys don't take anyone to, the first appointment probably be eight o'clock, 8:30 or so. Mr. Churman said, "Well, we have this one guy that, they've been in Oblin, he had a point, pick up a guy in Wallerton. So it made much sense, you know, it don't make sense for him to come to his job and then pick up the unit and go back to Oblin, it saved time." I said, "Well, I used to work before at a motor company and they never gave me a unit to drive home back and forth, so what make them so different?" I mean, I know the guy's a veteran and everything, but I also said, you know, due to the economy and everything, I just don't see how that make much sense.
I mean, maybe in the past, Jesse, not to interrupt you, probably to Don, because Don called me Monday morning, what time our meeting started here? If you gave us some of those issues ahead of time, Don, Sam, Jesse, we could look into it prior to you getting here and then we could have some discussion. Now we have to look and it's going to be, you know, to get a public answer another week away, so.
Right, well, we just had the meeting yesterday. Yeah, the meeting was yesterday and so, you know, yeah, we just had...
So that issue came up yesterday.
This shit transpired yesterday.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this one thing just transpired yesterday.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention and just, you know, following up and finding out the true answers to things, because sometimes, you know, things aren't as they appear or... My dad's favorite saying, "Don't believe anything you hear and only half of what you see," you know, those kinds of things, so.
The, the issue of liability is actually much greater.
Than taking it home.
The longer the vehicle is on the road and an employee is in our vehicle.
Right.
So limiting that time limits our exposure. So it's just inverse. But, you know, it's, the policy has made exceptions for various reasons. I'm not sure what you want me to do with this, if anything.
Yeah, I think we should follow through.
If that is happening, it should follow county policy.
Okay. I'll have a discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishing to come up and address the Board? Any topic on your mind? Seeing none, I move we go into executive session as outlined by the administrator. And you didn't have anything, Jerry? No, just the administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor downtown Lirio. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page. Then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.